Okay, welcome everyone to this special chain, special session on supply chains and fragility. And we're going to start with Meredith Crowley telling us about pro competitive effects of trade agreements. And take it away, Meredith. Thanks.
Thank you, Matt. Okay, thank you, everyone, and thanks for having me in this session today. I'm going to be talking about the pro competitive effects of trade agreements. This is a little bit. In terms of supply chains, my contribution is going to be to tell us a little bit about how different types of goods markups change when countries join preferential trade agreements. Okay, so as a starting point, just like to say empirically, we have very little evidence on how exporters change the prices or markups they set for selling to foreign countries when their own country joins a preferential trade agreement with another. We've had quite a few studies looking at how domestic firms change markups in response to trade agreements, but there's really no very little about, very little about what happens with exporting firms. As a starting point, let me just tell you that the members of the World Trade Organization, on average, belong to 13 distinct preferential trade agreements. So for example, the European Union is one of these trade agreements. Recently, when Britain left the European Union, it then signed a new trade agreement with the European Union, it then made trade agreements with countries like Japan. So each of these for the UK would be a distinct trade agreement. In the map of the world I have in the left-hand side of the slide here, countries are color-coded according to the number of preferential trade agreements they've signed. So the countries in darkest red have signed 40 preferential trade agreements, while those with the lightest pink shade have signed only one. And in general, when we're thinking about how a trade agreement or participation in a trade agreement could affect a firm's markup, we want to think about how exporters from one country, say Mexico, will change their markups when they join a trade agreement with a second country like the United States. However, this change in the firm's pricing and markups takes place against a background of competition from multiple other origin countries, say China or Egypt, that also sell very similar products in the United States. And so our starting point for this paper is to say because exporters are competing with exporting firms from other origin countries, in order to properly understand how markups are changing, we need to do this in a multi-country framework. So the first question we're going to ask empirically is how do PTAs affect market competition, exporters' market power and their markups? Once we give you some findings around that, I have a theoretical model where we're going to ask more generally, how does the distribution of markups change under a preferential trade agreement? And then what does this change in markups imply about global allocative efficiency? Our approach empirically, I told you, we're very interested in understanding how competition from multiple countries affects firms' behavior. So we're going to use from the World Bank exporter dynamics database, the universe of customs transactions from 11 low and middle income countries. Altogether, we have about 582,000 firms selling 5,200 products to 165 different destinations or importing countries. And we're going to look at how participation in 257 different preferential trade agreements impacts the number of firms from each origin participating in an export market, how this preferential trade agreement affects firms' market shares and their markups. And then particularly for supply chains, we want to think about how participation in a preferential trade agreement might have different effects on goods that the United Nations classifies as final consumption goods versus goods that are sort of critical to supply chains, which will be the intermediate inputs used in global value chains. Theoretically, we're going to build a multi-country general equilibrium trade model that features tractable oligopolistic competition across firms from multiple origin countries, where firms are going to be setting variable markups. We're going to estimate the model parameters using the method of simulated moments, where we'll be matching data from the model to our empirical estimates. And then we're going to use the model to conduct counterfactual policy analysis. Key questions we can answer with the model are things like, how do markups from multiple exporting countries change when a preferential trade agreement benefits only a subset of countries in the world economy? Empirical findings. First of all, our starting point is going to be with our empirical analysis. We're going to document what we've referred to as an empirical puzzle. The findings that we document are going to be puzzling in light of a workhorse model of international pricing from Akis and Burstein, it was published in the AER in 2008. What we find empirically is that in response to a 10% cut in tariffs, an exporting firm's import market share in a destination rises on average 18%. At the same time, the average exporting firm's markup falls by 4%. Now, in the Akis and Burstein framework, firms face a variable demand elasticity, where if a firm's market share in a destination increases, the firm will have more market power in the destination. This will make the demand elasticity it faces less elastic, and then the firm will want to raise its markup. We're documenting that markups are falling, so our results are essentially an empirical puzzle. Now, what do we see in terms of global supply chains in response to a 10% tariff cut? We find that when we look at consumption goods, so final goods, a 10% tariff cut is going to lead firms to cut their markup on average 6%. But when we look at intermediate inputs that can be used as further processing as part of supply chain, we find essentially no effect at all on firms' markups. Now, in terms of the theoretical side, the key thing we want to do is we want to reconcile these puzzling and contradictory empirical findings with economic theory. So our approach to do that is going to be to extend the Akis and Burstein model, which is a two-country model of tractable oligopolistic competition, to include first, multiple origin countries competing in multiple destinations. And critically, Akis and Burstein use a nested CES framework to generate their tractable oligopolistic competition. Their preferences have two CES nests. We're going to introduce an additional third nest to CES consumption, and this is going to allow for firms at the most disaggregate level will allow more intense competition among firms from the same origin relative to other origins. So to make that concrete, if we think about a country like the United States importing shoes from both China and Germany, what we are going to do is in the Akis and Burstein framework, Chinese and German shoes are going to be equally substitutable with one another. We're going to say Chinese, German shoes are more substitutable with other German varieties than they are with Chinese varieties. Okay, what this new preference structure is going to imply is that two different market shares of countries or origins market share in a destination as a whole. So the total value of shoes sold by Germany in the United States as well as a firm's market share among other firms from its own origin in a destination. So in this case, it would be if we have two German firms selling shoes in the United States, they sell the same value. Each firm will have a within firm, a firm within origin market share of 50%. Those two distinct market shares are going to enter the demand elasticity. What this will imply is that a tariff cut raises the market power at the origin and the destination, but reduces the market power of individual firms relative to their compatriots. In this framework, demand elasticity can rise or fall depending on which of these forces dominates, and hence the markups that firms charge can theoretically rise or fall. In terms of the literature, we contribute to a large empirical literature that looks at price and markup responses to trade policy and exchange rates. Our contribution is to show that exporters cut markups after a trade liberalization. In order to understand the mechanism, it's crucial to look at multiple origins and understand exactly how market shares are changing. Theoretically, we're going to make a contribution to the macro models on international pricing. Our contribution is going to be to extend Akis and Burstein to introduce these two market share reallocation effects and show how they impact a firm's elasticity of demand. So again, one market share reallocation effect is going to be a preferential trade agreement is going to shift the market share from a preferred country like Mexico into Mexico away from non-preferred origin countries like China. And then at the same time, a tariff cut can reallocate market share across firms from within an origin country. Our data, I already said, consists of firm product level exports from 11 countries around the world. In this world map, they're highlighted in red. Altogether, we have 26 million firm product origin destination observations. They're mostly available from post 2000, but the exact years of each country are listed in the table below. The heavy hitters empirically are China, Mexico and Egypt. And then in terms of the tariff data we have, it's going to come from the World Trade Organization. Some pairs of countries are going to trade under the rules of the WTO, we'll have that tariff. That's the case when firms have preferential, when countries have a preferential trade agreement, we'll use the preferential tariff. In terms of our baseline specification, we want to empirically estimate a firm-level outcome for a product I from an origin country O selling to an import destination D, a year T. We're going to regress that outcome on a very simple model, a dummy, to indicate whether or not the two countries, the origin and destination, have a preferential trade agreement in place in year T, as well as the tariff between the origin and the destination, specifically the one the destination is charging on origin imports for product I near T, and then number of fixed effects. Our two outcome variables we'll start with first, we're going to look at the firm-level export value. We're going to use this to estimate the elasticity of the firm's market share in the destination with respect to the tariff. And our second outcome variable is going to be the free onboard unit value, or in other words, the pre-tariff price a firm charges. We'll use that to estimate the elasticity of the markup with respect to the tariff. To do this and to estimate these elasticities, we're going to use a rich set of fixed effects. Starting with our regression where we use export value. If you think about a firm's market share in a destination, this is a firm's export value divided by the total value of sales in the destination. If you log that variable, you can put the numerator on the right-hand side, on the left-hand side, that's going to be our log export value. The denominator on the right-hand side is going to be covered by a destination product year fixed effect. So as the market size and the destination rises and falls, we're going to be controlling that with a fixed effect. What this means is that beta 2 is going to capture the elasticity of market share with respect to the tariff. Our second outcome is going to be this price regression, pre-tariff price regressed on the tariff. We're going to, in this instance, use a firm product origin year fixed effect. This means that identification of markup elasticity is going to come from price residuals. So essentially, every firm that's used our dataset has to sell its export in at least two destinations. This means the fixed effect is going to pick up the average price of the firm's product everywhere in the world. And on the left-hand side, we're going to have the residual price variation across markets or the pricing-to-market component. We're going to look at how the pricing-to-market component of the firm's price changes in each destination as the tariff in that destination changes. And that's how we estimate the markup elasticity. Terms of our findings, the first one, we see that when you have a 10% cut in the tariff, the market share of the firm in the destination rises about 18%. So as a starting point, preferential tariff cut increases the market access of firms from the preferred origin at the expense of firms from other locations. With this increase in market share, what should we expect to happen to the markup that the firm charges in the destination? Well, one way we can look at this is the markup a firm charges for a product I sold from origin O to destination D is just going to be a standard markup using the elasticity of demand. In the Akis and Burstein framework with nested CES, we have that the demand elasticity that a firm faces in a destination is going to be a function of two parameters. The elasticity of substitution within a product across varieties sold by different firms selling in that destination. And then eta, the elasticity of substitution across different products sold in that country. And that's going to be multiplied by the firm's market share in the destination. Now, we generally think that the elasticity of substitution within a product class is going to be bigger than the elasticity of substitution across products. And so what this means is if a bilateral tariff cut leads a firm's market share in a destination to increase, it will face a less elastic demand curve and its markup will increase. Empirically, what do we see? Well, if you look at the second column here labeled markups FOB, we find that in general, the first coefficient tells us signing a PTA leads markups to fall 2%, but a 10% cut in the tariff leads markups to fall 4%. This was the empirical puzzle I mentioned to you at the start. As the firm's market power in the destination rises, we find that the firm's markup in the destination falls. So to try to get a better grip on where this is coming from, we look at two different measures of markup, sorry, market share in the destination. The first one is we're going to be looking at the firms within origin market share. So the firm's sales relative to all sales from its own origin. We'll also be looking at a sort of aggregate level. What is the total, what are the total sales by all firms from origin O in destination D relative to total imports of that same product? Here, we get to a bit of an understanding of what's going on. In the first column, we see that 10% tariff cut leads the origins' market share in the destination to increase by about a third, 33%. So this is essentially when you favor one country over another, Mexico over China, Mexico's market share in the destination rises, but for the individual Mexican firm selling into the United States, we see that the average within origin market share is falling by about 30%. So again, the tariff cut is raising the market power of the origin as a whole, but reducing the within origin market power of individual firms. Now, what, how is this happening? So in this third column here, we look at the number of firms exporting from origin O to destination D. A 10% cut in the tariff leads to this sort of pro competitive, this has this pro-entry effect. There's a 22% increase in the number of exporters from the origin. So it's this entry that's declining, that's driving the decline in firms within origin market share and changing the overall market structure in the destination. Now, our next step is empirically, we refine our specification. We want to control for two other forces. First of all, we might think that if I'm selling from Mexico into the United States, if Mexico's competitors in the United States have PTAs with the US, that might change a Mexican firm's outcome. We also think that the tariff that Mexico's competitors with the US face, the Mexico's competitors in the US face would also impact. So we have these two additional variables. Just of time, I'll go through this a little bit quickly. When we extend the specification, again, we're just going to look at markups again. Here is the impact on markups for all goods exported. And we find, again, joining a PTA reduces markups, 10% tariff cut reduces markups about 4%, this red highlighted number here. And then if we also look at the indirect third country effect, if all of a firm's competitors in a destination have signed a PTA with the destination, this also has a general pro-competitive markup producing effect. Now, more interestingly, this session is about supply chains, and we want to think about how do changes in markups differ for goods that are just final consumption goods sold in a destination versus for goods that are intermediate inputs that can contribute to production in the destination? So the second column shows markups for broad economic category of the UN consumption goods. The last column shows intermediate inputs. In terms of the consumption goods, the results look a little bit like we saw before, but now they're a bit stronger. Joining a PTA is a general markup producing effect. A 10% tariff cut leads markups to fall more, the markup decline is now risen to 6%. And we still have this positive spillover effect, more competitors in a PTA has a markup producing effect. But when we switch to intermediate inputs, on the first thing is although there is a general markup producing effect associated with joining a PTA, when we look at the impact of tariffs, the coefficient is small, the standard error is high, and it's essentially, there's no precisely estimated change on the markup from joining the PTA. We look at third country spillover effects, again, there's no precisely estimated change. So the question becomes, well, why do markups fall for consumption goods but not for intermediates? In the interest of time, I'll be brief and just describe the results to you. What we observe is that tariff cuts induce high entry for consumption goods. So an average of 10% tariff cut leads entry to increase 28%. On the effect on entry for intermediates is much more modest. The 10% tariff cut leads only to a 10% increase in the number of intermediate firms. And when we look at the market structure cross firms within an origin for final consumption goods, market shares plummet. So a 10% tariff cut leads the market share of a consumption good to decline 42%. For intermediate inputs, there's no precisely estimated impact on the market share in the destination at all. So it seems that what happens is the market structure for products that are essential to global value chains are just much less responsive to PTA tariff cut. So it seems that the PTA is not being set up to fundamentally offer a disruptive type of change in market structure. Okay, in terms of our model, our goal is to develop a model of oligopolistic competition in which we get markups falling when a firm's market share in a destination goes up. So we want to decompose the conventional market share channel into two opposing effects. We're going to do this, the key model elements are going to be multi-country general equilibrium with heterogeneous products and firms. Critically, we need to have a limited number of firms at the product origin destination level, so it's going to be very limited competition. Firms will pay a fixed cost of entry and they'll re-optimize their export decision after any change in trade policy. And we're going to have a market structure where variable markups will depend on the precise market structure. And critically, we need to have this different degree of competition for firms from the same origin relative to those from other origins. On, again, in the limited amount of time I have left, I'll just briefly show you the CES preference structure. Our innovation is to add this third nest of additional competition across firms within an origin selling the same product. Now, this is going to give us a different elasticity of demand where both of these market share measures are going to be relevant and important. So what we do is we're going to take our model, we're going to simulate it for a model of five countries that trade 4,000 products. And we're going to use the method of simulated moments. So as we vary the parameters of our model, we're going to try to match our empirical estimates. In terms of the empirical estimates we're going to be targeting, from our data, we had the elasticity of the markup with respect to the tariff was 0.4. We're going to be targeting the elasticity of firms' market share in a destination, the elasticity of a firm's within origin market share in a destination, and the origins' market share. And then empirically, we're going to be using these estimated reduced form parameters to use the model to estimate the within origin elasticity of substitution, cross-origin elasticity of substitution, and cross-product elasticity of substitution. Okay, so after we've estimated our model, we're going to do one experiment I'll show you today. So the experiment we're going to do is we want to look at what happens when two countries in this five-country world engage in a bilateral tariff reduction. Initially, all firms are going to reach, the model will reach a competitive equilibrium where there's a 10% tariff that all five countries set on products from other countries. In the second year, the first two countries will sign a trade agreement, reducing their tariffs on each other to zero, but leaving high tariffs against the other countries. And then we'll look at how this impacts market shares and markups. Okay, so let me just skip ahead to show you, first of all, we want to think about what happens with aggregate market shares in country two. The impacts in country one will be symmetric. Initially, in the first period, all countries that are exporting to country two have roughly the same aggregate import market share on, or market share. And domestic firms from country two will have the largest market share in country two. When we have this tariff cut, what we see is firms from country two, they increase, sorry, firms from country one increase their market share at the expense of firms in other exporting countries as well as domestic firms. The most interesting thing here is what happens to the firms within origin market shares? Here I have the distribution of the market shares of firms from country one selling in country two for 4,000 different products. The graph shows you two distributions that are laid one on top of the other. The blue distribution is the distribution of market shares before the trade liberalization. The red one is the distribution of market shares after the trade liberalization. The x-axis is a market share measure. So for example, where you see one, that means that there is one firm from country one selling into country two. Okay, most of the mass in this distribution is between, say, 0.3 and 0.6. This reflects the fact that for most of these 4,000 products, we have two to three firms selling from country one to country two. When you have this trade liberalization, the distribution shifts to the left, on average, firms' market shares are falling. And for the average market share, it's falling from about 0.45 to 0.4. This is mainly driven by entry. Initially, we have about 8,900 firms selling from country one to country two, it jumps up to 10,000. Now, interestingly, with respect to our results on supply chains, if we restrict entry and exit, which is essentially, we're seeing very little entry and exit with intermediate goods, you essentially have no reallocation of market share across firms from the same origin. What does this mean for markups? Well, when we have free entry and we get a big reallocation of market share from relatively large values to smaller values, we also see, when we look at the distribution of markups, a similar shift. Blue here is the distribution of markups before the trade liberalization. Red is the distribution after the trade liberalization. The low end, we have markups of about 140%. The high end, the markup is going to be 190%. What we see here is a fall in the average markup from about 55% down to 52%. So as we said before, as what we find in our model is the change in the markup is going to be a trade-off between a reallocation effect driven by changes in the firms within origin market shares versus changes in the country's market share as a whole. Here, the within origin reallocation effect dominates so that the markup drops. And so this explains the puzzling empirical result we were seeing earlier. Again, what I told you about intermediate inputs was that we see very little change in entry, very little change in the size of the firm's market shares. If we want to look at a simulation in which we restrict entry and exit, so there's really not much going on on the entry margin, we get virtually no change in markups. Okay, and I think I am just about out of time, so I'll jump, jump ahead just to say, in this model economy, there's five countries, if we look at allocative efficiency, two things going on. The two countries that sign the PTA have an increase in their productive efficiency. Market share has shifted from not very good domestic firms with high cost to more efficient foreign producers. For the three countries outside the trade agreement, the trade agreement between the two preferred countries shuts out the small guys. So you actually find in the other countries, fewer of the small, less efficient firms are producing. And so in terms of production efficiency, it's going to rise. Of course, this is at the cost of welfare because we're going to have rising markups and lower variety. So to sum up, what we tried to do here was look at how preferential trade agreements impact market structure and market competition. In general, overall, preferential trade agreements are pro-competitive. They reduce the x, the markups charged by exporting firms. But we only see this having a substantial impact on final goods. In terms of intermediates, we see very little action, not real changes in market structure, not changes, no changes in markups. Our model reconciled this by saying that there's two important reallocations taking place within the economy. And that overall, even a bilateral trade agreement can lead to an increase in global allocative efficiency, but not necessarily an improvement in global welfare. So I'll stop there. Thank you.
Wonderful, and thank you, Meredith. And just as a note to our audience, please do submit questions and then I'll moderate them and ask them on your behalf. And we didn't, we didn't get any questions that time, so please, please do ask them. And we, any reason, perhaps you could share your screen and get ready, but in the, in the meantime, there's this one question I'd like to ask Meredith. So I was really intrigued by your result on intermediate goods versus final goods and this difference between them. Um, I was wondering whether you've tried to split up the intermediate goods at all. So if I'm thinking about some intermediate goods, I can imagine some kind of strong supply relationships between, say, one supplier and one firm, and their substitution is likely to be pretty hard. But then there are other products that the firms kind of buy off the shelf as inputs or more off the shelf as inputs. And maybe they're more substitutable and, and there may be kind of entries better and may, maybe they look more like final goods.
Yeah, we've done one breakdown where we've looked at, um, less differentiated intermediates and, um, more differentiated intermediates. In general, um, the more differentiated intermediates, my recollection is they, let me double check. They do have a slightly bigger markup change, but it's, it's again, it's a sort of larger coefficient, not something that's statistically significant. A different way to go forward here is to look at some of the other measures people have of, of contractability. So we could also break this down into different types of products. Some are going to be more contractable than others, um, and some are really just commodities. So we could do another refinement to try to get some more insight into this. Thanks.
Yeah, wonderful. Thanks. Okay, um, so next up, we have Ali Riza Tabesley telling us about firm failures and fluctuations. And thanks, Ali Riza.
All right, uh, thanks, Matt, for, and, uh, for putting this paper on the program. So this is, uh, joint work with Darren Ashmough. So, uh, let me start with a little bit of a, so this is going to be a purely theoretical paper, but let me start with a, you know, a little bit of a motivation. So if you look at the, the failures of firms or establishments in the US, not surprisingly, you know, the failure rate goes up during, during recessions. And you know, it's not very surprising that, you know, essentially you get more firm failures in an economic downturn. Now, when you look at a picture like that, you know, you can ask whether it matters, whether these, the increase in, in firm failures matters for, for business cycle fluctuations. Obviously, it's material for the firms themselves, but what, how important is that for aggregate economy? I mean, one argument is that maybe it doesn't matter very much, you know? In the end, what matters is the overall productivity of a sector. There's obviously some firms may fail, they would be substituted with other ones. But you know, and the idea is that, you know, in many, many models, uh, though by no means all models, but in many models, firms that fail are probably the least efficient ones anyways, you know? There is a threshold. If you're above the threshold, you're surviving. And you know, if your productivity, let's say, is below a certain threshold, the, these, these, uh, these are the firms that fail. So you know, these are the least efficient firms that, that are exiting. And one can, you know, call this a cleansing effect of, of, of recessions. And this is sort of a perspective that somewhat implicit in, in many, many, many models. But then an alternative argument is that, well, maybe they actually can matter a lot. And, you know, to the extent that one can imagine that supply chains are critical for modern production, then, you know, failure, firm failures may actually destroy productive efficiency because these firms, as they exit, they take away the relationship that had, they had with other firms in the economy. You know, and one way, maybe one indirect way to see that at least is that, you know, when you look at firm-to-firm relationships, they seem to be very highly persistent. And, you know, maybe indicating that they're not easily replaceable. So for example, the 83% of inputs purchased by Belgian firms, you know, any given year is from continuing suppliers, firms that they had a relationship with the year before, you know, pointing towards this, this persistence and the durability of their, of the relationships. So what do, what we do in this paper is that we develop a model of firm-level supply chain that takes two, two, two aspects, we try to at least take it seriously. One is that we want to make sure that, you know, we take these firm-specific relationships seriously and that these firm-specific relationships between a supplier and a customer contribute to, to productivity. And then as a result, the corollary is that, is that when, when firms exit, then they destroy these relationships and they can have implications for, for aggregate fluctuation. I'm going to give you, as I said, it's going to be a purely theoretical paper, but I'm going to give you results on existence. And I'm going to define, you know, show you the model and show you theoretical results on existence, uniqueness, and comparative static results. And also, uh, look at macroeconomic implications. But you know, in terms of the takeaway message is that, you know, this model is built such that firm failures can actually result in, in major disruptions and have aggregate effects. So, um, on the methodological side, as I said, you know, we're going to have a GE model with, with bargaining and exit. And the key thing is that, you know, the main difficulty we have in working with this model is that, as I'll be more specific about it as we go on, but you know, there are both strategic complementarities and subsistabilities in firms, uh, entry at a decision. And that's, you know, sort of what, what we have to deal with on the, on the, on the methodological side. All right. So basically sort of the big picture that, you know, this paper is going to deliver, this is going to be purely, um, discrete models of these derivatives, you should take them with a grain of salt. But the idea is that, you know, if you have any shock to this economy and this would have an aggregate effect on GDP, this would come from two separate channels. One is that imagine there are no firm failures. So you take the structure of the economy as exogenous to give it. Obviously, when you have a shock, this would have an effect on aggregate output via, you know, obviously, production possibility front, it may change. Prices would adjust, quantities and markups would adjust. And that would, that would capture the, the effect, the direct effect of the shock in some. And this is what most of the literature focuses on. What we're focusing is this second term, as, and that is as the shock arrives, it may actually lead to these firm, firms exiting that will change the structure of the supply chains in the economy. And that would then as a result have a second, you know, an amplification effect on, on, on aggregate. All right. So basically, basically, all the economics that's in the, in the model, I can capture it, given that I don't have a lot of time. I could capture it in this picture. So hopefully this would, this will convey the idea. So imagine you have this, this firm level supply chain and you have a shock to, to enter to firm J here, and that would result, let's say, to firm J's. Obviously, this shock would have a direct negative effect on aggregate output. You have just one less firm there. So essentially, I, the production possibility, it would shift in once. But then if firm J exits and imagine firm K was a supplier to J, well, if K cannot stop to J, then firm K would also exit as well. So that sort of creates an upstream effect, failure that amplifies the original impact of the shock. Maybe firm I would fail as well, or maybe not. But the key thing is that as firm J exits, then essentially firm I is losing an important supplier in, for example. And if I loses its suppliers, effectively I is also less productive. Now, if I is less productive, I may exit. But even if I does not exit itself, it may actually lead to the exit of firm L. The reason being that if J is out of business now, I is overall making less profits because it lost one important supplier. And now there is just less rents going around in the economy. Then now there might be less rents to be shared with firm L, and that would result in L's, L's exit. There is sort of essentially this horizontal effect of propagation. And then finally, there are some GE slash aggregate demand effects in this model. And the way that would work is that, look, if a bunch of these, a bunch of firms are failing all because of the shock, essentially the, the household consumption is going to go out, go down overall in this economy. The aggregate demand is going to fall. And as aggregate demand is going to fall, basically many firms, many, many other firms in the economy would also be making less profits. And that would force them past the exit, exit threshold as well. So that's sort of the, the way that this model works. At the end of the day, and shocks would redistribute surplus throughout the economy. And the risk, this redistribution of surplus may result in, in, in failures in different parts of the economy. All right. So let me skip the, this like, yes.
A, a specific question related to that. So for, for firm L, I can see how its profits might decrease, but could its profits also increase? Um, because it becomes the, the only supplier or the only supplier and, and therefore transacts more with firm I or you through some other.
Yes, so, yes, that's, that's right. So depend, it depends effectively on the elasticity of substitution between L and J. So the more substitute, if these are substitute, substitutable inputs, then exit of J is going to actually increase our profit. If they're complements, exit of J would, you know, so essentially then you would have two effects, right? Exit of J would always reduce, you know, can never help firm I essentially. From I would have, there would be less, less surplus in this relationship. And as a result, less surplus to be shared with firm L. Now, depending on the substitutability between L and J, you know, that may be con, you know, countervailed by egg, by extra profits for M. Now, in the model, we're going to assume specific kind of, we're going to assume that many inputs are complements, essentially, you know, shutting down this channel that we pointed out. But you're absolutely right. Um, okay, so let me get to the model. And so basically, this is going to be a model with N plus one industries. And of these industries are going to be producing intermediate goods. And there's, there was going to be one industry that produces the final. Each industry is going to consist of two types of firms that are the generic producers. And this is going to be a competitive fringe of these firms. I'm going to index them by B. And then there's a final collection of firms producing customized variants. And I'm going to index them by A. The demand side of the economy is going to be boring. It's going to be a unit mass of households with some utility over the final code. And they're going to provide labor to the, uh, inelastically to the, to the firms. So first, let me tell you about these generic producers of the B technology. This is going to be a competitive fringe of firms, as I said, indexed B. And they, they use constant technology to, to transform intermediate inputs and labor into their output. So here basically BIJ is the productivity of input J is the production technology of firm I. And basically, if I had stopped here, this would be standard competitive production equilibrium model. You know, there are, there are firms in different industries, they buy inputs competitively and sell them competitively. And this goes back to Matt's question. I'm going to assume that all inputs are gross complements within elasticity less than equals one. Okay. Now, uh, what we're going to add to this model above and beyond the standard model are these customized producers. So we're going to have a final collection of them in each industry. And they're going to use customer, they're, they're basically, if Matt is my customized supplier, I can use Matt for production as an substitute, as an alternative to these generic producers. But I have to only deal with Matt because he, our technologies are customized to Matt. The way we capture this customized relationship is with this exogenous network of compatible technological compatibilities, this G script, that script G. So for example, firm J and firm K are customized suppliers to firm I, which is itself a customized supplier to another. We're going to impose this specific assumption, specifically, we're going to assume, this is a simplifying assumption, that this tech, network of technological compatibility is going to satisfy two conditions. First, each firm has at most one customer. And two, each firm can have multiple suppliers, but they have to be in different industries. So in each industry, we're going to assume that firms are limited to a single customized supplier. So the fact that I has two suppliers here, J and K, that means that they are in two different industries. Okay, so the, the production technology of these customer supplies is going to be something like this. It's the same, has the same functional form as the generic producers, except that if I'm a firm J with a supplier, uh, I with this generic, sorry, if I'm a firm I, with a customer supplier in industry J, I can either use the customized input or alternatively use the, the generic input. And these two are perfect, has, have, are perfect substitutes. The elasticity of substitution here is infinite. So, but if I use the generic product, I'm going to get a productivity B. If I use the customized product, I'm going to get a productivity A. And we're going to assume that this A is bigger than equal to B. So basically, the wedge between the productivity A and productivity B is going to capture the extent to which J is customized for the production technology of firm I. If however, I don't have a customized supplier in that industry, either because I didn't have a relationship or that firm exits, now I'm forced to go to the generics and buy, buy, and, and which is obviously going to give you productivity. Okay, so for the most part, we're going to look at a Leon TF production technology, so across industries. And production technology is Leon TF, but within industries, we have perfect substitutability as long as a customized supplier exists. Okay, now that's about, so that's, that's about the, the production structure. To be a customized firm, you have to also pay fixed costs. And we're going to say that you pay Z R units of labor at T equal to zero. Once you pay that, you can operate as a fixed, this cost is going to be sunk. And then you're going to be able to operate in the next stage as a customer supplier. And of course, if, as a firm, if you decide not to pay this cost, you can exit. Once you take these exit decisions into account, you're going to be, end up with an endogenous sub-network of active firms. This bold G, which is going to be a subset of the technological compatibility matrix script G. Okay, so let me skip, there's going to be a consumption good sector, but let me skip that. So last thing I have to tell you is the terms of trade. So obviously, the generic producers, as I said, they're going to be competitive. That means that they're going to price a marginal cost. What I have now told you are these customized producers. We're going to assume, so if Matt is my customer supplier, it makes no sense to assume that this relationship is competitive or happens at the, at the, at the, at the fixed, uh, markup, for example. So we're going to assume bargaining relationship between a customized supplier and its customized customer. Specifically, we're going to assume that firms are going to have market power in this relationship. They're going to bargain at T equal to one, and they're going to agree on a price. And then it's, this price is going to be a commitment by the supplier to deliver as many units demanded by its customer at that fixed price that we agreed on. More specifically, we're going to assume something like Rubinstein bargaining, random off bargain. At every period, the supplier and customer can make offers to one another that are probably delta one minus stuff. So you can use this delta essentially as a, as a, as a reduced form parameter capturing the bargaining power of the supplier vis a vis the custom. If Matt makes me an offer, if I reject it, I get, we go to the next period. And again, with some probability, one of us can, can make an offer to the other. And both parties discount the future at some, at some constant rate, which we're going to take to one. And in the end, if Matt and I cannot reach an agreement, we cannot trade at T equal to two. Okay, so this is basically, oh, yeah, and one more thing I have to say is that these bargaining powers are going to determine equilibrium prices, markups, markups response to shocks, and eventually effectively shocks pass through. And remember, as a customized firm, I can always either go to my customer supplier, if it exists, or as an outside option, go to the generic producers. That essentially means that this is a bargaining problem with an outside option. So the price that can, Matt can charge his customer can never exceed the outside option of me going to my less, less, um, uh, less productive generic producer. So this is essentially puts an upper bound on the price that Matt and I can agree. Okay, and of course, both of us always have the outside option of walking away and not even entering into this relationship. Okay, so this is basically summary of the model at T equal to zero. Uh, yes, please. Yeah.
And so I have a question from, from one of our, one of our viewers.
Yes.
Um, and the, the viewer is interested in how often is the case that a firm has a single supplier, um, a single kind of customized supplier for, for a given input? And how, whether you know anything about that and, or whether, and how important it is for your, for your model and for the things you're going to draw?
Yes. So the answer to that empirically, I don't know. I assume that, you know, firms, you know, in, especially major firms have more than one. So this is essentially, at least in this version of the paper, we were trying to relax this. Is, um, is a, is, is a technical assumption we have to make in order to limit the type of strategic subsistabilities that Matt, Matt asked me about earlier, earlier in the presentation. So the one way to think about it is that these generic, so maybe I should say this way. You can think of these generic producers as my second customized supplier. It's just that this wedge between A and B captures the second best, um, second best option available out there. So maybe a different way of putting, capturing this assumption is, or presenting such assumption is that you can have multiple customized, quote unquote, customized suppliers, one of them is better than the other one. The only assumption is that these second guys, we're going to assume they're competitive. So he said that I have, I have, it's not that I have a one, two, three, four, five. I have one and then many, many twos. That's really the core of the assumption. And the competitiveness of the second best is really what's going to help us solve this problem. Um, but empirically, probably it's way more than one. Yeah.
Thanks.
Okay, so let me summarize the model. At T equal to zero, this G script G of technological compatibility is going to be realized. The, the producers decide whether to pay this fixed cost and operate, otherwise they have to exit. And that's going to induce this G, uh, bold G, the endogenous, uh, production structure. At T equal to one, firms are going to enter into these pairwise fixed, fixed cost contracts, which as I said, it's going to be a commitment to deliver as many units demanded by their customers. The, the, the generic prices, they're going to be determined, and so there are going to be two sets of prices. There are going to be the customer prices on any pair of customized firms that are active. And they're going to be generic prices. And T equal to two is basically boring. Entry decisions are made or exit decisions are made, prices are set. So all firms are going to basically maximize their profits by choosing input output, making input output decisions. And of course, households are going to make consumption, consumption decision. So now I have to tell you about the solution concept and then I can get, get quickly to the results. So basically, be given that this is a, this is a, uh, this is a three-period game, my solution concept is going to be, um, uh, essentially based on backward induction. So at T equal to two, when all prices and, uh, and entry decisions are, are sunk, you just have basically a production equilibrium. It's going to be a collection of quantities such that firms minimize costs, fate meeting their output obligations that are presented, also maximizes utility and all markets clear. This is essentially consistency in the quantity space. Then you go to T equal to one, and that's the collection of prices, generic and customized prices and quantities such that backward induction, the quantities in a sub, in each subgame informs a production equilibrium. And no producer has an incentive to deviate from the equilibrium and change the price. If you're a generic producer, you, you don't, you cannot earn high prices by offering a different price. And if you're a customized producer in some relationship, you don't have an incentive to break this relationship, for example, by offering renegotiation to your partner. So if Matt and I have, are facing price P in equilibrium, neither one of us wants to walk away or go to the outside option or say, no, let's, let's actually renegotiate this price by, 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 by starting bargain. Okay, so essentially a mutual. Okay, so essentially a mutual consistency relationship in the price space. And then at T equal to zero, it's when the exit decisions happen. So we're going to say a full equilibrium is a natural G star such that quantities form a subgame subgame perfect, essentially, they're they form a production quality equal to two, processes correspond to pricing equilibrium equal to one. And then at T equal, and then at T equal to zero, effectively, no firm, any firm that decides not to exit is making positive profit. And all firms that decide to exist would have made negative profits had they decided to. Essentially, this is endogenizes the the input output, the the entry exit decisions of the. All right, so did now now that I gave you the model, let me get to the results quickly. These are some technical results. Basically, this result says that for any set of network and prices, a production equilibrium always exists and unique. T equal to one, but this this result says that a bargaining equilibrium always exists and is unique. And that all pairs of firms reach an agreement, the prices are going to satisfy the following consistency relationship. We're going to, the genetic prices are basically going to be based on marginal cost pricing. This is intuitive because all these firms are competitive. The more interesting part are these customized prices. So the customized prices are going to be given by the solution to this equation. Look, this is the minimum of two objects being equal to zero. This object being equal to zero is basically the assumption that the out, this this would be the case when the outside option binds. That tells us that the price that Matt can charge me should be equal to my outside option. When the outside option doesn't bind, the prices are going to be equal by this object equal to zero. It's easier to write it this way. These muse are the markups. Basically, it says that the ratio of the markup of a supplier to the customer is equal to the ratio of the bargaining power. So essentially, if you have a high bargaining power, you're going to charge a higher markup. Times the overall total surplus in this relationship, so this total surplus, it's got to be here. One thing that the reason the total surplus shows up here is that these markups, we're defining them as absolute markups of the ratio of price my, as the difference between the price and margin cost, not the ratio. Okay, that's why you you get this big A in the in this relationship. Okay, and that's that's the decisions that's equal to to one. And now, when you go to T equal to zero and look at the full equilibrium, this result is a full equilibrium exists. But more importantly, the set of these equilibrium have has the largest element with respect to the set inclusion order. And the key thing is that aggregate output in this greatest equilibrium is higher than all other equilibrials. So you may have many equilibrium, but many of them are due to coordination failures or sound spots. So there's going to be one equilibrium, which is going to be the greatest than than all of them in terms of the number of firms that operate. And it's going to have, it's going to be, has the highest aggregate output with respect to all of them. One technical point here is that this is a model, as I said, because there are these strategic substitibilities in the model, this is not a result that one can prove with standard Tarski lattice theoretic results. So, you know, we have to, you know, change that that result a little bit in order to be able to accommodate both strategic complementarities and substitibilities. Given that I don't have much time, let me skip this and get to the comparative static results. So now, given the model I told you, let me show you essentially how the how the how the how the model works. So take this fair of firms I and J. I'm going to call these firms upstream to to this pair, this firm is going to be horizontal, and these firms are going to be downstream. So first result is going to be a comparative static result with respect to the change in the bargaining power. Maybe it's easiest if I show that result visually here as well. So imagine I have a prepared of firms I and J, and I increase the bargaining power of firm J vis a vis firm I. What's going to happen is that essentially, as this bargaining power goes up, J is going to extract more surplus from I. Okay, but then that's only the first order effect. Even that J extract more surplus from I and J and its supplier are also bargaining, that means that this guy's overall surplus is going to go up as well. Of course, now prices and quantities have to adjust such that and markups have to adjust such that this this specific division of surplus works out as I'm telling you. But now, same same logic on this side. If I is making, it's less of the surplus being shared with I, there's less surplus to go around everywhere else. That means that all these firms are going to be Warsaw. Okay. That's the first one. Second result is going to be comparative static with respect to the structure of the network itself. So for now, I'm just to forget about the endogenous exit decisions. Imagine I just knock out some firm, and the question is what's going to happen? The idea is that as the network becomes shrinks, as more firms exit under certain conditions, each firm is going to make less profits and aggregate GDP is going to fall. Again, it's easier to see it in this picture. If I take out this firm J, just mechanically remove it, this firm I now has to rely on the generic variance of input J for production. That means that, you know, basically, there is less surplus being generated overall in the economy. And then this has to be this, you know, shared by other firms in the economy via bargain. That's going to mean that all these firms are going to now be making less profits as well. And then obviously, that also reduces aggregate GDP. Okay. And finally, let me show you one more comparative static with now respective the productivity shots. Okay, basically, it's easier again to look at the profits. So look at this pair of firms I and J, and suppose I increase the productivity between these two firms. Because as the pairwise productivity goes up, I and J are going to be making, total surplus in this relationship goes up. And it's going to be divided between I and J, so both of their profits go up. I's profit has gone up, that means that, you know, and sharing it with everybody else, and all of these guys are going to be better off as well. But this J supplier may actually be Warsaw as this productivity goes up. Of course, J is making more surplus, more of the surplus is going to be shared with this guy. But overall, this guy is going to be Warsaw for the following reason. Look, if J is more productive, in with I and J, this relationship is more productive. Obviously, there are two effects going to happen. On the one hand, overall demand is going to go up for firm I. That's going to push up the demand for I, push up the demand for J. But if J is more productive, that means that to produce, to meet my demand, I actually need less inputs. And it turns out that this second effect is going to dominate. And that means that this firm in here is going to be Warsaw. So this is something that you don't get a standard competitive model, it's really because of the the nature of the bargaining. And that we're so far away from the from the frontier that you're going to get this, what we call sort of a perverse quantity effect. That higher productivity may actually hurt some 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 upstream firms as it reduces the demand for intermediates. Okay, so that was a comparative static with respect to the exogenous infrastructure. Let me do a very quick comparison with respect to now, I allow firms entry to exit. So basically, the the result here is that if I increase, let's say, firm level fixed costs, so basically make it harder costly for firm to to continue operating, that's going to shrink the set of active firms, that's going to lower aggregate output, and that's going to reduce markup's profits for all firms. Okay, and there are two effects here. One is a partial equilibrium effect, this is sort of what I showed you on the first slide. You know, there is just less profits going around, you know, the firms, if my supply fails, I'm less productive. I may also fail as well, that's going to create this failure cascade. Um, sorry. But then there is also general equilibrium effect. If there are less, you know, productive firms out there, aggregate demand is going to fall. That's going to result in lower profits for all other firms in the economy, and that's going to be a second amplification effect. So given that I'm very short on time, let me skip, uh, let me, this would be my last slide, basically. Um, base, maybe it would be better, actually, I stop with this example. So imagine now, I increase this, this is again a model with endogenous entry or exit, and I increase the productivity between one and three. As we said, it might result in the profits of four and five falling. If some simple relationship between these productivities are satisfied, the increase in N A one three here may actually result in this failure. And they may actually, in the end, be be recessionary again because of the two things, because of the non-competitive nature of the model. And because of these entry exit, these endogenous exit decisions and an increase in productivity may actually result in 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 a reduction in aggregate output. All right, so um we have some other results here, but let me, I think this is a good, good place for me to start, but stop, so. Um, so that, you know, I'm not over time.
Well, thank you. Um, so let me, let me ask you a quick question. So.
Yeah.
The extra amplification effect you get from from firm failures when you did the initial decomposition at the at the beginning. And I was wondering if you could think about which industries are more susceptible to exit than than others. So in one way, I was thinking about it is the difference between and fixed costs and sunk costs. So if I have, if I have sunk costs, then then yeah, that that cost has already been sunk. So this, my threshold for exiting is um is unless susceptible to exits, I can't recover my fixed costs. Whereas if there are fixed costs, um then I then I can recover them by exiting and I'd be more inclined to exit when my profits get and get low. Or if there's anything else that that could affect those, how how strong that margin is in different places in the economy?
I see, so yeah, so in our model, at least, there is not much of a difference between the two because everything, all the, everything's complete information and the exit decisions happen way before anything else. So basically, you pay the fixed cost first and then you operate. So and then, you know, the exit, so there is no exposed exit after the realization of the shock. Everything happens, you know, first shocks are realized, then you make your decision. And then, you know, you bargain and quantities and everything. So I can imagine that, you know, that would be different if you had a different timing. So I don't have a good answer to that beyond the fact that that's not captured in the model. Um, that distinction in that sense.
Okay, okay, thanks. And and we don't have any other questions submitted, so we'll we'll move on. Thank you.
Thank you. Stop sharing.
I'm okay, and then I'm I'm lost up, and I'm going to be talking about globalization and the role of supply chains in growth and innovation. And this is joint work with Matt Jackson at Stanford. Okay, so over a long period of time, one of the things that improvements in technology have have continuously delivered is a reduction in transportation costs. And this this graph illustrates that for sea freight and air transport costs and even international cooling costs. And when you're just talking to people. At the same time, we've seen a huge increase in international trade. And so if you combine different studies that you can go back a a long way, and you can see how international trade has increased as a percentage of GDP rapidly over, you know, a long period of time. So there are lots of benefits associated with globalization that are that are well documented. But in this project, what we want to think about is specifically what impact, and if any, does reduced trade costs have on the structure of supply networks? And in turn, how does that change in the structure of supply networks? And impact on the fragility of the world economy and global innovation? So the basic idea is that as trade costs and fall, we might get more specialization in production, leading to less diverse supply chains. But at the same time, the supply chains might get deeper, they might get, they might get longer and production might get more complex. And those two forces might lead to increased fragility. At the same time, lower trade costs are also going to change the technologies that we're using in order to produce. And so, and that effect can be ambiguous, that could go in in various ways, and that's going to make it hard to and hard to come up with a strong comparative static result there. As well as there being an impact on fragility, there might also be an impact on innovation. So if we think about a the ability to innovate as being determined by the goods that you can access and innovation being driven by combining different different inputs together and experimenting in in that way, then more specialization and changing trade networks could have an impact on innovation and in the project, we 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 think about that. And today, I'm going to not talk about that, I'm just going to talk about fragility and focus on that because of time constraints. Okay, and then the last thing that will come out of this is that because there's going to be this benefit from diversity that's not typically going to be internalized by the economy, there's going to be a role for governments intervening in order to maintain diverse production technologies that are going to improve stability and reduce fragility. Okay, so that's broadly what the 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 project is about, what I'm going to talk about. And more specifically, we're going to deliver a simple model of global supply networks. In that simple model, we're going to contrast short run versus long run, or the 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 short run versus long run impact of shocks. So when a shock hits, in the short run, what is the disruption? And in the long run, when everything can re-equalibrate, what's the disruption? How do those things compare to each other? We'll think about lowering trade costs leading to and specialize specialization. And in that way, changing, or we'll show that at least the specialization, and in that way, changing the structure and of the the supply network. In particular, we'll show that when trade costs become sufficiently low, you get a unique supply chain for each each final good. And then that's one way in which you can get increased fragility. Okay, so with that said, let me jump into the model and be a bit more precise about what we're doing. We're going to have a world with N different countries. And there are going to be intermediate goods, which we're going to index with little M. There are going to be final goods, which will index with little F. Each country is going to be endowed and with some with some labor. That's going to be supplied perfectly and elastically. And there are going to be iceberg costs and for the trade of each good between each country. So theta K N M prime is going to be the number of units of good K that country N has to ship to country M prime in order for one unit to arrive. Okay, so an iceberg cost of three would mean that you have to ship three units for one unit to arrive. We're going to assume that there are no iceberg costs on the final goods and to keep everything simple, that will buy us a lot of attractiveness. Our suppliers of labor here are also the the consumers. And as usual, they're going to have Cobb Douglas preferences. We're going to let PKN be the price of good K produced in country N. So that's the the local price of the good produced in that country N. And then the market price of that good is going to be the minimum of that local price or the price of importing the good from somewhere else, in which case you have to factor in the iceberg costs. And when you do that. The technologies we model are going to be Leon TF, and so we can represent them just by a vector. In the vector, we're getting, there's going to be only one positive entry. So each technology is going to produce a single output, the good, there's going to be no byproducts of of production. And then the negative entries in the vector are going to represent how much of the different input goods in needed in order to produce that one unit of the output goods. Okay, so the example I've given here is for a technology that produces the second intermediate good. And by using half a unit of the first intermediate good and 1.2 units of labor. So the Leon TF technology assumption is going to be useful for us, it's going to give us some some attractiveness, but we we don't think it's always not going to be driving the the results. And one way to see that is that you can approximate any constant returns to scale and production function via some set of these Leon TF technologies. So we're going to endow each country with a finite set of these Leon TF technologies. And if you make that set rich enough, then you can arbitrarily closely approximate any constant returns to scale technology you want. Okay, so let me give you an example to try and explain how the model works and how the moving parts fit together. So in this example, I'm going to have just two countries. They each gain to be endowed with one unit of labor. And there's going to be one consumption good and one intermediate good. And we're going to assume that they each have a single technology for producing and the intermediate good and a single technology for producing the consumption good. So country one has technology tau one producing the intermediate good, which takes one unit of labor and produces one unit of the intermediate good and technology tau one prime, which takes one unit of labor and one unit of the intermediate good and uses that to produce one unit of the consumption good and and so on. Let's suppose to begin with that we have high trade costs between the countries. So we're going to have an iceberg cost of three on both the intermediate good and on labor. And in this case, there's, you're going to get production in country one is going to go via the production of the intermediate good in that country. That intermediate good production is then going to be used to produce the the final good. And so one is going to be using both of its technologies and country two is also going to be using both of its technologies. And in equilibrium, country one is going to, well, half of the labor in country one is going to be producing the intermediate goods. The other half is going to be producing the consumption goods. And then the total output in country one is going to be half a unit of the consumption good. And then that half the use of consumption good is going to become the wage of the labor that's going to get consumed by the the labor of country one. And so we end up with a wage of a half. You can do a similar calculation for country two, and you get the aggregate output is five six. Okay, now we're going to reduce the iceberg cost on the intermediate good to one. So there's effectively no no cost of shipping the intermediate good now. But we still have an iceberg cost of three on on labor. And what happens now is that country two's technology for producing the intermediate goods, tau And what happens now is that country two's technology for producing the intermediate good tau two is now no longer going to be used. Country two would rather import and the intermediate good from from country one. And in equilibrium, the the wage in country one is going to be a half, which means the the cost of producing an intermediate good in country one is is a half. And the market is going to be, we're assuming all the markets are competitive. So the the market for intermediate good production is competitive, meaning it's also priced at a half. So when country two buys two thirds of a unit of the intermediate good, it costs them one third and one third of a unit of the consumption. Okay, and then country two is going to take the two thirds of a unit of the intermediate good advice from country one. Combine it with one unit of labor and produce one unit of the consumption goods used in that technology. Of that one use, the consumption good, it has to pay for the intermediate goods. That costs a third of a unit of the consumption good and the remaining two thirds of a unit is going to be its wage and the wage there. And now output goes up to seven over six. And then if we reduce the iceberg cost on labor as well, so the iceberg, so labor is free to move as well as the intermediate goods. Now, the production technology for producing the final good in country one becomes redundant, is not going to get, is not going to be used. And because the labor is free to move, there's going to be one global wage now. And that's going to be, so that's going to be the same across both countries. And the technology that's going to be used is you're just going to produce the intermediate good in country one. And then ship that over to country two where you produce the 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 final good. Overall production and is then going to be allocated to to labor across those those two things and and you end up with a wage of three fits. Okay, so in this case, overall output has increased to to six over five. But notice here, the the waging country two is actually fallen as a result of this liberalization here. Okay, so that's that's the model. That's just an illustration of how it works and the kind of specialization that you're going to get as iceberg costs come come down, as transportation costs come down. We have some some technical results which are useful for making progress and getting on to the more interesting questions with this and with this problem. So the first and the first result is that if each potential supply chain for a final good uses some labor, so as long as it's the case that along each supply chain that would produce a unit of the a final good, that some labor is being used. Then you're not going to be able to produce infinite amounts of that good. That's going to make sure things are well behaved. And then we have an equilibrium existing for generic sets of technologies that equilibrium is going to be unique. And the prices of the intermediate goods, or the prices of the goods are just going to be the sum of the prices of their inputs, because through, because everything is competitive. And and you can reduce, and this is a nice, a nice simplification. You can reduce each supply chain in in this economy, each kind of combination of different inputs into some amount of labor that's being used to produce that 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 output. And that labor is, has to be country specific, and unless the unless there's free movement of labor and across countries, unless that iceberg cost is one. And but nevertheless, you can still view each supply chain really is just taking in some units of labor from the different countries and producing the and the final goods. Okay, so that's it for the kind of basics of the the model and and the setup. And now I want to move on and start to think about what happens and when you you shock this this economy. And then what the disruptions are going to be like. Okay, and the main thing I want to you to take away from this is that the the short run disruptions can be very different from the long run and the long run disruptions. And so and then Halton's and theorem tells us what happens in the long run and and say the contrast is with with Halton's theorem. In the short run, the disruptions are not going to depend on the value of the industry, the shocks, but rather on the flow of the goods that that go through it into final goods. But I'll I'll explain that in in a minute. We're going to assume for this part of the analysis that labor is perfectly mobile. That's going to allow the cleanest comparison with Halton's theorem, because then we have a representative consumer in in this model. And you can you you can relax that assumption and results extend, but but this is the the cleanest version of our results. Okay, so first of all, as a benchmark, and what is what is Halton's theorem? Let let me remind you or or tell you if you're not familiar with it. So Halton's theorem tells us that the long run impact of a change in the productivity of a K produced using a technology. And tau K just depends on the amount spent on it compared to total GDP. Okay, so I I just take the total expenditure on a produced good K. That's the one that I'm making more productive or or less productive that I that I'm shopping. And I take the overall expenditure in the economy on that good and I just divide it by the total expenditure on final goods. And so just divide it by GDP. Okay, and so the amount that a shot matters is going to depend on how big or the amount that the shot matters to a specific industry is going to depend on how big that industry is in this sense. Okay, and yeah, then now I'm going to give you a quote, which is actually taken from Vasco and Ali Reza's survey. And so this, well, they 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 quoted in there, that's where we we got it from. And but it's attributed to to Summers in twenty thirty. There would be a set of economists who would sit around explaining that electricity was only four percent of the economy. And so if you lost eighty percent of electricity, you couldn't possibly have lost more than three percent of the economy. However, we would understand that when there wasn't any electricity, there wasn't really going to be much economy. Okay, and so this is a really nice quote for us. It gets at the the kind of critique of here, all the equilibrium adjustments may not be, may not be possible and will we'll we'll see what happens in the short run and we'll contrast that to the the long run predictions of Halton's theorem. Okay, so what does happen in the short run? What what does our our result say? So let's shock production of some good K and permit no adjustments. So in contrast to Halton's theorem, where there's equilibrium adjustments going on on various and dimensions. Here we're going to hold the technologies that are being used completely constant. Okay, so you can't substitute and use a different a different technology, you can't source more different inputs. And that you you're just holding everything fixed. If good K lies on supply chains for a set of consumption goods F of K. Then the impact of the change in productivity of good K produced using technology tau K just depends on the total expenditures on all final goods that have good K in their supply chain divided by GDP. Okay, so instead of what math, you know, before in Halton's theorem, what mattered was the value of the industry and as a rate over GDP. Now what matters is the value of all final goods that use this intermediate good as an input. Okay, so you have to take the value of all of those industries and divide it by GDP. And that can obviously be a much a much larger number. So if you think about something like the the semiconductor crisis that you has been going on and is still going on to some extent. Then Halton's theorem would say you need to take the value of the semiconductor industry. Look at that as a percentage of GDP and that gives you an idea for how big, you know, how much the shock matters. So if you shock that industry by ten percent, then you take its contribution to to GDP and and you shock that by ten percent. And that's not such a, not such a big number. On the other hand, if you take all of the consumption goods that use semiconductors that have computer chips in them. And you shock all of those by by ten percent, that's a a much, much bigger number. Okay, and then that's kind of the the short run prediction that we would get without any adjustments. That's kind of if you like the and upper bound on how bad the disruptions can be. And then you might want to think of Halton's theorem as being a lower bound on and how much and how bad things can be if everything goes in the just very quickly. Okay. So in the short run, what happens is that you you get the shortage of the good that's been shocked. Affecting how much can be produced of all the final goods that that use it in their supply chain. It it kind of acts as a bottleneck in those and in in those different supply chains. And therefore reduces and reduces the production of those supply chains by and by the amount that it shocked. And you know, it doesn't matter whether you're spending a few cents on computer chips. You know, you still, if if I have ten percent less computer chips, I can still produce ten percent less cars that are using those computer chips. And so it the amount that you're spending on the the good that shop doesn't really matter. What matters is just the amount, the value of the final goods that are being affected. In contrast, in in the long run, the shocked and producer is going to buy is going to be able to buy more inputs and and is going to produce similar amounts after the after the shock. And so because they were optimizing to begin with, that yeah, that's where for small changes, you're going to get similar amounts and that are being produced. And that means that in aggregate and the total aggregate consumption is is only going to be affected by how costly this it is to source more of these inputs. So if and if I produce, if I can produce ten percent less computer chips and with the with the same inputs, then this will just tell us that we need to source more, the computer chip producers need to source more inputs, they need to increase their the amount they source by by ten percent and then they'll have more computer chips. And and then they can, and after that adjustment, that goes through. And then so the aggregate loss in consumption is ends up being proportional to the amount we spent on 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 the goods. So that's that's kind of where the difference is coming from. Okay, so now let me move on to think about how this interacts with with globalization. So generically, when we're considering the the different technologies that 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 could be across the 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 countries, the the following history. And there exists some constant greater than one. So remember, the iceberg costs are always weekly, weekly greater than one. Such that if the labor iceberg costs are below this constant C, then there's going to be a unique supply chain for each final good. And if all the iceberg costs are below C, so not just labor, but all the intermediate goods and and as well. Then there's going to be full specialization. And so that's going to mean that each and intermediate good is going to be produced in a single, by a single country and generically. And there's going to be a unique supply chain for each each final good. Okay, and then so, you know, this is what you would expect. We 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 grew up learning that and the globalization and reduced shipping costs, reduced trade costs, again, to lead to specialization. This is, this is just I'm showing an extreme version of that as the as trade costs get very low. Okay. So what happens with that specialization? Well, if trade costs fall sufficiently and you get these unique supply chains for producing and final goods. Then your production ends and is going to be less diverse than it was. Now, if you get a shock anywhere along that supply chain for the final good, that's going to affect all production of that final good. Whereas if I had various different supply chains for that final good and I was just to shock one of them. Then the impact is going to be limited, because there are other supply chains that were also being used to to produce that final good. So the increased specialization is going to lead to more fragility and in that way, all all else equal. And then there are other effects that 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 go on. So the change as trade costs go go down, we're going to change all the technology that we're using optimally is is going to change. And in general, those effects can be ambiguous. So it might mean that we end up using more goods or might end up as an economy, end up using fewer goods. And that is going to affect the diversity of production as well and and hence and hence virginity. But there's there's this kind of a natural way in which you're going to get, as as trade costs come down, it's you can cope with more complex production. And so that I think there is a general force also pushing you towards having longer supply chains. And as supply chains get longer, then you can can show they're going to get more more fragile. And and the economy is going to get get more volatile. So i- if that's how the technological changes manifest, then then that contributes to fragility too. Okay, so lower trade costs are going to change and the supply network, we get these unique supply chains. The input disrupts. Uh, the disruption of an input is going to affect and more different or more final good consumption. And but we get this ambiguous effect on the the number of goods. So to see that the effect might be ambiguous, notice that yeah, we might have this one intermediate good that's being used on lots of different supply chains. But then as trade costs go go down, you might use different technologies, use more different intermediate goods instead to produce those different final goods. The best technology for producing some other final goods might be something different or and it might be and and so on. And so that's that's why you can't you can't have a nice comparative static result that says for sure the world is going to become become more fragile. However, while the overall effect is is ambiguous. You can show formally that that the longer chains are going to make the disruptions larger. And that for a fixed set of goods that are being that are being used. So if we don't change that, if we hold that constant, then the consolidation of supply chains and is going to increase fragility as well. So if we have fewer different countries producing a given intermediate goods and we consolidate production in just one country, that's going to lead to and more fragile supply chains. Okay, I'm not going to talk about the innovation and globalization, so let me just um just conclude. So one, yeah, this is a a very simple and stylized model. We're looking at a very stylized benchmark and that we're holding everything constant and not allowing for any and re-optimization anywhere. So it's it's kind of the immediate short run effects, but we we still think it's a useful useful benchmark. Another way in which the model is 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 very stylized is that we have these missing markets for supply chain disruptions and we're not allowing those to be and yeah, we we we're not allowing contracts to be written that might solve those problems or other solutions and to to present themselves that could mitigate the the impact of of the shock. So in practice, you might find that firms multi-source, they purposely locate in different and in in you find purposely located in different locations, because they anticipate that there could be a shock to one location. And then they're going to be have some monopoly power and in the other location. That's absent from our model, but could be important in practice. And nevertheless, and firms need to be you sufficiently forward looking in order for these things to really work and they need to be able to anticipate and the different kind of shocks and and that seems hard for them to do perfectly and all of the time. Okay, and then yeah, so I'm pretty much out of time. So let me and there and let me see if I have I have a question. I'll try very quickly to answer it, but I may run out of time. The story in your model is that a firm fails and other firms can't survive as well without them. But it is also possible that a firm fools and then other firms step in to take over that firm's capital and contracts, meaning we don't get the same follow-on effect. Yep, that's that's absolutely right. That's another way in which things might adjust. And they might adjust on the entry and the entry margin as as well. And we're, you know, our short run analysis is completely missing, completely missing those effects. So I think I think that's right. We just say that. And I I think those kind of things happen, perhaps not immediately. Perhaps it takes, it takes time and there's some disruption in the intervening period, even if you're taking over the same contracts and and so on. Okay, and I'm out of time. Exactly. So we should wrap up, wrap up there. And thank you very much for for joining the session. And thank you for those of you who submitted, those of you submitted questions. And and thank you very much to Meredith and Ali Reza for contributing to it. Okay, I I I think we're probably automatically offline at this point, but in case, in case not, we should just say goodbye and 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 leave. Okay.